I'm Michael Riley, Chairman of the Town and Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's July 22nd, 2021, and it is 7:01 PM. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. We're gonna call the roll now, starting at my right.
Dominic Panici here.
Ryan Condon here.
Leanna Brozzi here.
Michael Riley here.
Bruno Maeney here.
Wesland here.
Nicole Lupo here.
Rick Schultz, town planner.
Donna.
Donna Sizin, office manager.
And Sarah.
Sarah Strad, reporting.
And Mr. Chairman, I just want to remind the public this is a hybrid meeting. This meeting is being conducted as a hybrid meeting. All participants may attend in person or remotely as follows via computer, tablet, or smartphone at the link which has been published. Any members of the public who desire to submit any written information relative to the business set forth on the agenda may do so up till 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting via electronic mail to the address set forth on the agenda. Notice hereby, given that this hybrid electronic meeting shall permit the public to view and listen anonymously, and when permitted, participate in real time, be recorded and posted on the town hall website within seven days, be made available to the public within a reasonable amount of time. In addition to standard parliamentary procedure, I wish to announce the following rules. Please mute your microphones so as to reduce background noise at any time you are not speaking. Prior to speaking on each occasion, each speaker shall clearly state their name and title for the record. The use of the chat feature is prohibited. I'm gonna go to general public participation. Following guidelines are to assist those who wish to speak at general public participation. The commission welcomes public participation and asks that speakers please limit their comments. Speakers are requested to first state their name and address for the record. Speakers may offer objective comments about planning and zoning matters and land use-related concerns that should be brought to the commission's attention. The commission will not permit any expression of personal complaints or defamatory comments about the commission, members of the planning and zoning department, nor against any person connected with the Town of Monroe, or any other individual, firm, or corporation. Speakers are not to comment on any suggested, proposed, or pending applications by the commission, except at a public hearing for that application. No discussion permitted by any party for any matter related to pending or ongoing litigation. This chair has a discretion to limit comment time, generally three minutes per speaker is allowed. The chair may allow additional time. Thank you. Now, do we have any members of the public that would like to address the commission?
I would like to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
My name is Lois Spence. I live at 29 Partridge Drive. I have a quest-- actually, it is a question. May I address one of the regulation changes that you are proposing that I don't know has been to public hearing yet? This is concerning the portable sign regulation that you are proposing. May I speak on that, or is that not up for grabs at the moment?
Mr. Chairman, are we closed to public hearing?
Yeah, that public hearing is closed. I don't know. Does that mean--
Yeah, no more--
--no more comments?
Staff can receive comments.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Then there is one more. I was listening to your meeting last time and heard that the Amazon parking lot was requesting that they not build their building. Is that something I may speak on?
That also was a public hearing, and is that public hearing still open?
No, it hasn't been. Lois can speak on that one.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. As a many-year veteran of the Inland Wetlands Commission, I'm very familiar with a lot of things that happen. We've reviewed over 350 applications. And I have-- I do know that-- pardon me, I'm losing my words tonight. I would like to request that you do not permit Amazon to not build the building. There are several reasons. One is that a parking lot without a building is not a very taxable commodity. It runs with the land. Amazon may not always be there. If Amazon leaves, you have an enormous parking lot with no building and nothing to really tax on it. Even if we do have the ability to tax the vans, I think that without the building, it's just kind of fruitless. Secondly, and this is where my experience as an inland wetland commissioner comes in, it's extremely important that you remain consistent and that you don't set precedents. If this has been through the whole process of applying for a building as well as a parking lot to turn around and say they don't want to build the building now, everybody that ever applies to you can do exactly the same thing if you approve this. And it could cause enormous amounts of headache for you as well as possible legal issues. So that's one thing that Inland Wetlands is extremely careful about, is setting any kind of a precedent. Because it will be-- it will come up again regardless of your reasons for doing it, regardless of how nice you're supposed to be, or whatever it is that your reasons are. It will come up again, and it will probably bite you, as it has to us in several instances. So please be very, very careful in setting any kind of precedent. So that was really all I had to say. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Ms. Spence. Are there any other members of the public that would like to participate tonight in general public participation period? Yes? Come up and just state your name and address for the record at the microphone.
My name is Monica Emke. I'm at 43 Laurel Drive. My first time being here and participating. The objective of me being here is really to inform you of the blasting that's happening on the property behind Dr. Don's on Route-- off of Route 25. We've been for the past years dealing with the blasting, and it's just out of hand. The company beforehand, it was Blast Tech, is the name of the company. I put in a claim for the damages done to my home, and it's been declined even though they never even bothered coming to my home to do any kind of inspection. I was denied to have my house assessed before blasting was done. So I'm just getting a lot of roadblocks, and I'm looking for you guys to perhaps guide me and help me because I'm not getting any headway. Now, we have a new blasting company in that property. They have come to my house to assess, but it was done in a very loose way. Not-- it's really to protect their interests, to cite what damages have done to date so they can just be saying that it's not us. It wasn't-- there was no-- there's a woman literally walking around with a video cam, no measuring tools, nothing like that. So I'm again, just, I'm looking for some help and guidance to deal with all this because I'm not getting anywhere.
Mr. Chairman, at the staff level-- as you know, I just got back from vacation last week. At the staff level, I've talked to a couple of commissioners. Complaints have been coming in in a more steady pace for both 127 Main Street and the Victoria Drive site, the Amazon site. Amazon site, that's gonna end because it's a small area for the blasting. The 127, as you know, there's another year's worth--
At least.
At least. It's all rock there as the commission is aware. So I am going to take that on personally to work with the fire marshal. The fire marshal takes the lead on it, and hopefully we can come to a resolution.
I would appreciate that because I've been denied at every corner. My claim was denied without anyone even viewing the damages, which is ridiculous. And I was never-- my property was never assessed. So now we have a new company in play. I would like to just start on the right foot. And--
I will be meeting with the fire marshal and the homeowners. I had a woman come in for the Amazon site today, and I spoke with her. So I'm gonna take all these--
Is there a new blasting? There's a new blasting company there?
Haynes.
No, Haynes is-- no, Haynes is a construction-- no, but who's blasting over there?
I don't know with certainty. Do you remember the name?
I thought-- I got a note because she was Haynes.
No, there's a blaster that has a different license that's associated with Haynes. It's a different--
So is it a different blaster there?
Yes. I will--
What type of damages have you experienced?
Ground foundation, interior, cracks in the wall. I have my tile in my basement is cracked, and it's just growing. And my house is over-- you know, it's 30 years old. It's not settling. It's all the-- I would love to get a size meter to measure exactly. We had a blast today. My whole house rattled and shook. It's pretty severe, and then I'm seeing clouds of smoke going across Route 25. I mean, it doesn't seem like the process-- like, there must be something, safety precautions that are just being avoided because it's really bad.
Is there a practical alternative?
Well, there's proper precautions and steps. My job is to work with the fire marshal to make sure those steps are taking place. Sometimes you do run into problems with the adjacent properties, and that's why they are bonded. But we hate to see it get to that level. There's ways of dealing with it. So I, as I indicated to the chairman, I'm gonna take it upon myself because I'm starting to see an increase, and we have to deal with this immediately.
How many complaints have we got?
Well, me personally, one for both sites. But in talking with the zoning officer when I got back, he says there's a couple, two or three.
There's gonna be even more. I mean, you're only hearing those, but we have a whole Facebook page dedicated to keeping us in the loop of what's happening and pictures. I mean, we have tons of documentation we could share with you. Like I said, it's been going on for years. So my claim was put in last year. That was ignored, so I have lots of documentation I can share with you.
I know what to do. I've handled a lot of blasting in my other chat.
Okay. So you gonna give us a report then on that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we have Monica's phone number to do in case--
I'll talk to you tomorrow. Are you gonna be--
What's tomorrow?
You're gonna be around tomorrow, Friday?
Friday.
Are you gonna be around the neighborhood?
Well, I mean, to either come to town hall or to call.
Sure. I'll make myself available whenever it takes.
Yeah. I want-- I'd like if you could physically come down because I can introduce you to the fire marshal and staff people that are--
Helping all my documentation and pictures, and you'll see--
That would be helpful. We start the day at 8:30.
So what time tomorrow would you like me to--
8:31.
Yeah. 8:30.
Start the day right.
30 seconds.
Go on, get there early. Start the day right.
Yeah, try to make-- I just have to leave at--
They close early, though, so be careful.
So 8:30 to 9:30 or after 11:00.
I'll be here any--
Okay, but you close-- don't you guys close early on Fridays? Yeah.
1:30.
1:30, you're bound. Just so you know.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public here tonight that would like to participate or online? Any other members of the public hearing none? We will move on to public hearings. We do have public hearing SCP 2020-06, file number 1631A5, Victoria Drive. I do have a letter here from Soli Engineering asking to withdraw this application without prejudice. So we will withdraw that application.
Oh?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
May I add for the record some additions to the agenda? I know you discussed it beforehand, but for the record, we have the addition of two time extension requests. The first one is for-- That's not the right one. Okay, SCP 2020-0H for 615 Main Street. And they are requesting a 90-day extension to fulfill the conditions of approval. And then we also have excavation permit EFP 2019-02 for 7-15 Main Street. They are also requesting a 90-day time extension for the process of completing the conditions of approval. And then there was also another request for the excavation permit to change the condition in their approval, which I think we might be able to. And we can do that on-- we can make that item nine under other business.
What address is that?
7-15--
Both of that? Same one? Both?
Yes.
We're gonna deliberate about these now?
No. We're gonna review these at the number nine on the agenda.
Aye, aye, Captain.
All right. Thank you for adding that to the agenda.
Okay.
Moving right along, number five on the agenda is a site plan review. This is SCP 2018-03, file number 1598A205 Monroe Turnpike. This is a request for staff to authorize site construction for a future Panera Bread pad. Decide and discuss pending modifications.
That's--
And for the applicant?
Is that really him?
I've been in person.
You're not just virtual?
This is your first meeting?
This is, for the record, my name's Kevin Soli.
Oh, we know.
Licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Soli Engineering. It's strange and great to be here. And I'm actually here tonight to talk about some really good and exciting news.
Can't wait to hear this.
So the commission is very well aware with the project, the Town Line Plaza 205 Monroe Turnpike. The commission probably remembers, the project was originally approved in 2018. It included a Noble Gas fueling facility, a sit-down restaurant, and then some strip retail towards the rear. The-- we were very excited to come before the commission in late two-- so just to orient everybody, we don't have it up on the screen. Do you know who to do a presentation?
Do we have control of that?
Can I do a presentation?
No.
Well, I can look at it. It looks great on my screen.
That's awesome.
Any idea? Yes.
Hold on.
Oh? You have work left left. Uh, I did.
Do you just need the touchscreen?
That sucks.
Just start touching screens.
Do it while-- No, hang on. I'll do it. No, no, hold it. Donna, can you see the--
No, not yet.
Okay.
No, that's why I tried to make the chambers presenter.
Yeah, and then something came up that says, "Share your screen with HDMI cable," but the HDMI cable's plugged in. And it was like right there. All of a sudden, that's like-- This is an online joke over here, Kevin. Or can you click on it?
Maybe you have to go back to your office and do it from there?
I probably could.
Pull my laptop, do it that way.
You wanna move it to next meeting?
No. No, we don't wanna do-- Yeah, no, absolutely not.
You wanna just pass around the computer? I'll take a peek.
Leon wants a recess.
Leon needs a break from this. I told Grubbo to show up.
Give me a sec. Give me one sec.
Take your time, man. I mean, it's--
You said a clicker?
No, I can't.
Clicker?
Ah, dude, that day--
Plus, I'm having it hurt my thumb.
That day will never get away from me.
Where's that one? It's off her?
Joking. This was an EDC pen.
That's what I have.
Or Bill Porter. I punched him out that day. I think he's still mad at me.
Always having issues with it.
Oh, my God. Oh, my God. Bill Porter, I think, is-- he's gonna wake from me in the gates of heaven and punch me in the mouth.
Are we live? No. Still recording.
Yeah, still recording. Tell them the minutes. Tell them the minutes.
Monroe's son.
Someone just say that.
Yeah, my wife. Sub up.
You're being recorded.
I tell you, Cindy is the best at everything. How she deals with Leon is unbearable.
Oh.
Hey?
Hey, Kevin. There you go.
Kevin.
He's resourceful.
It's amazing. You just had to plug it in.
No, it's a lot of the go-to meeting on this laptop and then share this laptop screen.
Mmm.
There's always a way.
We have all your information.
You're gonna have to let everyone else use your laptop.
Well, this is their laptop.
Oh, that's just fantastic.
So anyways, so 205 Monroe Turnpike gets on Route 111 just north of the Town Line Trumbull. You can see it here. And this was in its former conditions. It's across the street from the Aquarium Water Company, D.R. Charles, to the south. This is decided-- this is an area that's under construction. We had previously got approval to get in, got a building permit, and constructed Noble Gas, which is open for business and I think is a great addition to the community. When we initially got this approval to proceed with construction, we were only allowed to move forward with just the Noble Gas because that was the only building that had a building permit. In late 2019, we came before the commission. This was the approved site plan at that time. And so just for everyone's familiarity, this pad here was originally approved as a 4,900-square-foot sit-down restaurant. No drive-through, no outdoor dining. And then in late 2019, we came back before the commission to get approval for Panera Bread. And that included the drive-through, outdoor dining. It was approved in January of 2020, and then COVID hit. So everything was kind of put on pause. Panera put their program on pause. And we never memorialized or finalized the approval for that Panera Bread. So our only current approvals still include that 4,900-square-foot sit-down restaurant. We are-- this was the elevation at the time. It was a little bit of a different building footprint. We are very excited to say that Panera Bread has come out of COVID. They have actually launched a brand-new Panera Cafe prototype, and they have 100 construction in Missouri. And the Monroe location has been approved. A lease has been signed. And this project wants to move forward with the brand-new Panera Cafe, which incorporates a drive-through. It's a little bit different than what was approved in 2020, and we're currently finalizing our application to bring before this commission. It'll be accepted at the August 5th meeting, and we hope to have a public hearing in early September for that. We're very excited because it's a little bit of a different building shaping and configuration. It is an absolutely gorgeous design that we're-- that Panera's incredibly proud of and we're proud to be a part of. There was a lot of discussion with the last application about architectural elements. I think this building design, the way it's configured is-- a lot of those concerns kind of go away with how they develop this architecture, some building materials, things like that. It's just going towards the rear of the site, wrapping around to the drive-through, and then again towards the front of the store. The overall-- so what we're here tonight, and we're requesting this commission to give staff the authority to allow the developer to start site construction for this pad, this area of the property, prior to the issuance of a building permit because we're excited to get started with some of the overall site excavation, earthwork, things like that, while we work through the permanent approval amendment modification specific for this new Panera building footprint. And just so the commission's aware, this is what was previously approved. The current site plan approval that we have, this red dash line is effectively the limit of disturbance and activity for the previous approval. And then you can see the proposed new Panera Bread site plan fits right within that area. So the earthwork, site activity has been approved. We just don't have a building permit for the building yet, but we're requesting the commission authorize staff to allow us to move forward and the developer to start some of the site work while we're bringing in the new application for Panera Bread. And as I mentioned, we'll be before even September. We're very excited to actually bring this back through the process. And these guys are very motivated to get construction going right away so they could potentially open early in the spring. So that's the basis of our request. A lot of good news, a lot of good excitement, we think. And we're just requesting the commission to give us that authorization to start site work.
Thank you. I'm just gonna poll the commissioners for questions. Let's start with Commissioner Panici.
So other than a little bit of enlarging the site plan and the building, everything in the parking remains the same?
For the most part, there are minor tweaks, but we really want to just kind of get going on some of the earthwork to prep that pad area a little bit. But obviously, the finished work would be what would be designed and approved by this commission in the coming months.
The occupancy remains the same of the building?
Yes. Yep. We're proposing this site plan up on the screen now, and this is what's gonna formally become before the commission in the next coming weeks.
Okay. And so now the new date in the spring becomes a reality?
We have a-- that's why we want to get going. Yes.
I have no more questions.
No questions.
Yes, you're staying within the same area. You're not going--
Same limits? Yep. Same activity that was previously approved from a site work standpoint.
You gonna bring that in when?
We're gonna have our application in before the first meeting in August so it can be accepted at that first hearing, and we hope to have a public hearing the first meeting in September.
And you have a signed thing with--
Yes. We've actually already brought this building to the ARB. They actually looked at this in March as we were preparing for this eventuality. It took a little bit of time to dot the i's and cross the t's, but now that we have it, we're here and we're excited to move forward.
Building gonna be the same size or bigger?
It's a little bit smaller, actually. It incorporates a lot more outdoor dining out front, larger patio. It also adds a second drive-through lane for kind of like rapid pickup. A lot of these restaurants now, you can order on your phone. There's actually a separate lane. You can go in, let them know you're there, or it was the drive-through window.
Okay, I'm good.
No. Hmm. I like it. So it's gonna be a lot smaller, a little bit smaller?
No, it's-- I think it's 3,600 square feet, give or take. So it's about the same size as we had previously looked at. But it fits perfectly in the area, and it did all right from an operations standpoint.
So if I remember correctly, when we were going through this whole process, we had-- we had two noes on it, and one was just basically because of the design, the original design.
Right.
This building there.
Yeah. Am I not going to it? There we go.
There. So obviously, it looks completely different. I mean, I was a yes on this building as well. But you're-- so because you're reconfiguring the building, you're gonna come before us so we can go over it one more time?
Yes.
But pretty much everything's gonna-- the concept and all that kind of stuff outside of probably being open earlier and all that kind of stuff is pretty much gonna be the same?
Correct. I mean, the big thing with this new Panera Cafe that they've-- Correct. I mean, the, the big thing with this new Panera Cafe that they've, uh, created, um, it's a little bit of a narrower building. This was a little bit wider. And if you remember and recall, a lot of the discussion had to do with some of these larger blank walls that didn't have a lot of elements.
Correct.
Discussion about ghost net lighting.
Ugh.
Fill in some of that space. But I think with, with their new design, a large glass facade across the front. Um, you know, some additional elements with the canopies and things like that. We think this is a very different aesthetic.
Now, you're, you're, I remember, I remember the landscaping plan originally was like obscene.
It was robust.
Yeah, it was more nursery than restaurant. Um, wh- are you guys in this, you guys, what are you guys thinking about that part? Uh, with the smaller building? I know there's probably gonna be some questions and concerns about.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go through that at, at, at length. Once we actually.
Gonna have, have all that stuff ready?
Yeah. Including all that in our application.
I'm just talking about it because I, it's, I, we would, I mean, speaking for myself, would like to get it through as quickly as possible if you're gonna already start earthwork and stuff like that. Let's not sit here and take more time than needed on it, so.
Absolutely.
Um, definitely if you're gonna come with this concept, definitely a sharper building than originally. And I liked the first one, so this one, if this is what it is. Um, I'm good with you guys getting going and that kind of stuff, so. I'm done.
I like the idea of seeing this building, uh, you know, when you get into our town line in Monroe. And I think the design change is, uh, is a, is a positive. I'm excited to see the site work begin and I'll be behind it 100%.
I agree. No questions. I'm good with it. Looking forward to it.
And I'll say, we, we've been working with staff closely, um, and they've been, uh, great to, as we go on through this process. So we're very, uh, optimistic that the application we bring for you will, will incorporate all their concerns and we hope that it can. And obviously we've learned a lot from the last time through. So we're pretty, uh, optimistic that hopefully we can actually get it done in one evening.
Did the other building have a drive-through? No.
It did have a drive-through.
It was one of their first concepts, wasn't it?
It was.
What was it?
It was a little bit different in.
It was the main reason. Wasn't it one of the main reasons about leaving Newtown or something like that?
Uh, yes.
Cause Newtown didn't have.
Didn't have a drive-through.
They really wanted.
So this is gonna have two drive-through? One's like a fast pickup or something like that?
It's the pickups, yeah. It's the, you know, have standard drive-through, but there's actually like, um, similar to how McDonald's just added their second order menu board. This doesn't have two menu boards. It just has a second kind of. Where you can go up to and you can say, I'm so and so, I made an order.
Right.
You head in line, you can pull right into, uh.
So it's like a mobile drive-through. Is that why you're reducing this, the square footage of the building?
Um, I think it's, I think part of, the other thing is this building will have fewer seats than what was previously approved, just because that's kind of the trend that's been happening in, in response to COVID. Um, I think this is, this is, uh, a seat reduction of maybe 25 or 30% from what was previously proposed.
Oh, wow.
Allows for some of that consolidation inside the store.
But you have more outdoor seating.
Yes. Yep. Nice, it's seven.
I like the outdoor seating.
Up front.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Or could, and, uh, we're gonna direct the staff to authorize the site construction.
Yep, um, Mr. Chairman, uh, since I, I, I got the news when I came back on Monday, staff has been, uh, meeting with the applicant and their team. And, uh, my whole, uh, department was waiting for the commission's direction tonight. Everyone is on board. The normal bonding will be in place, you know, all the things that we did like with Amazon, so.
Do we have to vote on it?
I think so. Well, I, I would suggest that you, uh, make a motion on this.
All right.
We have to set a timeframe or no?
No.
Chair will, uh, entertain a motion.
Will we do it now?
Yes. To request staff to authorize site construction.
I make a motion for SCP 2018 dash O three file 1598A to authorize staff for site construction.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. If there are any further discussion? If not, all call the roll. Condon, yes.
And Rosie, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Mayne, yes.
Westland, yes.
Passes.
Thank you very much. Excited to see you next month.
Oh, you're leaving?
Oh, no, I'll, I'll still be in the room.
How much we have for next month?
And you're welcome.
Yeah.
Okay, deliberations and determinations, number six.
That's the whole month, Kevin. Like one meeting, the whole month.
Pending meeting minutes. We have before us the meet, the minutes from our July 1st, 2021 meeting. Chair will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as drafted.
Parcel two, okay, not on this one, so.
I'll make a motion.
No, you weren't here.
No, cause you.
I was seated.
I have a motion. Need a second?
Is the, this is the updated agenda.
Guys, give it up. I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second. Are there any discussion or changes?
I have a question, Mike. On the meeting minutes, if someone is seated, like Damari, would it say anywhere on the meeting minutes that we were seated?
Oh, it should be, it should be.
I didn't.
Present, no?
No, it had all of us on there.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make sure that's added.
Okay.
Cause that's, that's relevant for.
Okay.
Hi. Any other questions, changes, comments? If not, um, on the roll, starting with Commissioner Condon. Uh, Condon, yes.
Rosie, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Westland, yes.
Before, yes.
Number seven on the agenda, pending applications, deliberations and determinations. First, we have RA 82021 dash O two, file number 1016, the mixed-use design district and special development district. This was a public hearing that was closed at our last meeting. At that time, the commission directed staff to, uh, write up a draft. So we could review it in more depth tonight.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you have the Planning and Zoning Commission version. It's in front of you. The new text is in red. Everyone has a copy?
Yes, sir.
So, uh, let's, uh, begin. As the commission is aware, this is a Main Street Design District overlay and a Special Development District. The overlay designate geographically where it goes in town. That indicates that the parcels are unique and worthy of consideration for other uses than what is allowed by the underlying zone. If a, if an, uh, petition comes in to change it to a Special Development District, it goes through a public hearing. The commission then has the right to say yes or no. So there's two parts to it. Once again, uh, if the commission adopts this, you will automatically assign this overlay area to all parts of town as you deem fit. The initial submission was for all parts of 25 except for the center. Now, having said that, uh, what I have done is added the changes as, uh, suggested and recommended by the commission. Let's go to page two. Uh, the commission suggested that we add, uh, uh, the commercial portion of Route 111 and, uh, Route 34, those corridor areas as well. Uh, Route 25, excuse me?
Did you map out an area for this?
What's that?
Do you have a map for this?
We're going, we're going to. It, it's all of the commercial and industrial.
So we're gonna get it, we're gonna get a map before we vote on this thing?
Right. Well, let's talk about the text and then I'll add the map. You're gonna say yes or no, come to a consensus, and then we'll prepare the final, uh, document.
Okay.
So the, the, the recommendation, uh, from the commission to direct staff was to do all 25 except for the center. So we still have time to, if you want to do the center or not, Stephanie. All 111 except for the residential portion and all of the commercial for, uh, Route 34.
I think we should include the center.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get a consensus on that. So, uh.
Okay. With any of this thing here, we have to change the zone in order to do this.
Right, this is just the text.
So we have to change each parcel.
Next step is to change the zoning.
Have to change the zone. No, change our zone map. I'm talking about, to get an approval here, we'd have to change that zone for, for that particular parcel. We'd have to make that a different zone.
Right. So there's, there's really three steps in, in the whole realm of this. You're considering the text. The text is spelling out where it goes and what you're going to allow. You've decided to broaden it by adding the other two corridors, portions of the other two corridors. It sounds like you want the, the Village Center to be included. The option was to keep it out and do another special district there, but that's your call. The second step.
But really, what difference does it make?
Oh, no, it's your, it's your call.
And, but no, that's why I'm just asking, what difference does it make if we, if we left it out, if we put it in?
No, in some communities, they have, have unique, uh, areas in town, geographically, historical areas. Or an area of significance because of building clustering, et cetera. You can do a special zone there. You actually can.
On, on the other part of that, if they come in front of us with something, can't we like, in order, cause we can work with them.
Oh, absolutely.
Zone to get the design that we want for them.
Under these regulations, yes.
We, we'll, we'll be able to do what design we want.
Absolutely.
Otherwise, we don't have to approve it.
That is correct.
So it really doesn't make a difference then?
Right. You have the tools to do all of the 25 corridor area, if you want to include it, the, the Village, uh.
Okay.
Um, uh, you know, just, uh, just to give you an idea, like, uh, Newtown has Sandy Hook. They have a special Sandy Hook. But Sandy Hook has his own zip code. There's a lot of history there. So you could take it to that level if you so desire, or you can just use the zoning technique to do 25 corridor, 111 and 34. So I, I think you want to just use this technique for the whole area.
So when Newtown did it, right, they have different areas that were certain stuff you can do there?
Right. Uh, the historical areas have, they use that tool called a Village District. It gives you an enormous amount of controls, right down to, uh, Architecturals. And you will persevere in court if it's challenged. This is a lower level of Architecturals. The least level that we have in town is the current regulations. They're generic commercial zone, B1, B2, LOR. They're not a special zone. Your center on 25, you can impose a Village District zone using the rigid, uh, state statutes that can give you more teeth. But I don't think I'm hearing that. I think you feel comfortable with this. Uh, you saw how they used it in most areas of Newtown. Where's the.
Let's be careful with what you feel comfortable with because I'll be honest with you. I'm not 100% comfortable with it, so. That's just me.
The location, we're gonna.
I, I, I wanna get through this so that we can start asking questions and not ask questions as we pick and.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess we're just jumping in. I mean, I don't wanna send the wrong message. You know, I mean, I, I, I agree that, you know, I think we need to protect historic district. Um, you know, I think the town could, uh, be quickly overdeveloped and lose its character if we don't protect some areas and create a Village District.
And that's an option that you have.
We do, and we wanna keep it. We wanna protect it.
But it's excluded from here.
Well, that's not what I'm hearing. No, no, Stephanie, Stephanie's not a historic district.
It is not officially historic district. That's Stephanie.
It's historic district that was.
This is.
Now, is it historic district? And it's excluded from this.
That's why I asked for a map.
Stephanie is not a historic district. We tried to make it a special, um.
Okay, well, Stephanie Center, then we'll refer to it as Stephanie Center.
We tried to make it, uh, its own special district, but it didn't go through. Okay, there was, uh, that was before my time, but.
Was there a reason for that?
I don't know. There was some drawback on it for somehow.
There is this, it, it could be very rigid, but I think Leon has the right way. Let's go through the text. I'll have the map at our next meeting. And then we can, you know.
Oh, we just, can we just do them at the same time?
We, we can't, but I, I, I have the text. Let me just go through it quickly, okay? Then you can just move on to the next. Uh, the next issue was the two acres. It was suggested that we lower it to one acre. As submitted, it was two acre minimum. So I put in one acre. That's on page two. And the second to the last page. Multi-family developments within the MDD. I added a line, "The location of multi-family developments shall be identified as a recommended location in the Affordable Housing Plan." I keep reminding this commission, we adopted our P O C D. The P O D says we have to do an Affordable Housing Plan. It's mandated by the state. We, uh, that is a high priority. We're gonna be working on that this year. That will be a supplement to the P O C D. It will have teeth. It's important that this regulation identify that. That Affordable Housing Plan will identify the elderly housing that this commission approved and other areas in the community that are worth considering for affordable housing. The, this multi-family development, and I'll get to it, is consistent with the mixed-use development, which requires all of them to have a 10% set aside. The commission has been very good about recognizing that. It's a state mandate. We have to move forward. And I applaud the commission for moving ahead on that. Now we have the Affordable Housing Plan. Every town's gotta do it. This time though, you've got to identify geographic areas in the community. It's to that level. It's not, well, we will permit it. We'll talk about the location when we get a submission. You gotta show it and identify it. Now, it doesn't have to be site-specific. It could be a general geographical area. I've looked at other plans. All the plans are coming in now for the 169 towns. Most of them are doing generalized areas. And most of them are in the downtown areas, obviously, because you have the infrastructure or in commercial corridors. They're not popping them in residential areas for the obvious reason. Uh, but as this commission knows, we can get an eight dash 30G for any area of the town. Uh, this town is fortunate. It's that we have onsite septic and that's kept it away. You saw what happened in, uh, in Trumbull in the 90s. They really got hit hard and they lost a lot of their industrial base and then the state changed the laws on that. So that language is added and in the last page, we reduced the 65% to the 60% as recommended. And we also add a language that says, "In lieu of providing affordable units, the applicant may contribute to an Affordable Housing Trust Fund and/or a combination of both, as authorized by the Planning and Zoning Commission." That's another tool that the community can use. It's authorized by this commission. The town council will have to adopt it like they did the Open Space Trust Fund. So that is another option that you have. You may have an applicant that says, "I really don't want to provide the 10%, but I'm glad to donate to the, to the, uh, Affordable Housing Trust Fund." We do have affordable housing in town, Housing Authority, uh, they are in dire straits for, uh, capital. You can also do a combination of both. We'll do 5% of the total unit count. And then we'll have to come up with the formula on the, uh, on the dollar amount. That trust fund will require a document that goes before the, uh, the town council. The commission will, will get involved in it like it did with the Open Space Trust Fund. So those are the, the text changes that staff picked up from the last meeting that we had. Uh, obviously we need to look at the map and put, uh, everything together, but please take this home. Look at it and then we'll have a continuation of the discussion on it.
Rick, for, for, um, section seven, did we talk to land, uh, to council about that? Cause I'd wanted, I think I'd requested just to make sure it was something we could actually do and should be doing.
Uh, I made a referral to the town attorney and, uh, it starts with the town attorney, cause they look up, uh, the enabling statutes. That's where it is now.
All right, yeah, cause I wouldn't want to add that until we know it's something.
I can tell you, it has grown in the city of Stanford.
I wanna, I wanna make sure we can do it here in Monroe.
Right.
All right.
Is there any other discussion on the text for tonight? Cause, um, I'd like to get any changes in now.
Well, give it some thought. We still have, you know, this commission, you know, has the final. Well, give it some thought. We still have, you know, this commission, you know, has the final say in this, so, uh, we want to get this right.
Nothing else for Rick tonight on this? Okay. The second item under deliberations and determinations tonight is R A A 2021-05, file number 1019E. This is our, uh, text amendment that we've been looking at for a couple of months now that we came up with in, um, the regulation subcommittee. Rick, do you want to review that?
Yes, I, I sent the final version to the commission. I also have a resolution if you're so inclined to take action on it tonight.
Does everyone have a copy of the resolution? I don't think you sent, you brought them. We have that here.
I think it was emailed to us.
Yeah.
Earlier today. Did you go over it?
Okay, the, uh, the first deals with the outside storage. And we broke down the commercial districts to allow up to 20% of the lot area as well as the LOR district, the industrial 1, 2, and 3 up to 40%. We took out the language that says the contents of outdoor storage shall be temporary in nature. Under sign permits, we eliminated no variance shall be granted by the ZBA concerning any sign. That's inconsistent with state statutes. The next provision for signage, we relaxed the 10-foot setback from 10 feet to 5 feet from the street line and, uh, keeping it still 10 feet from all other property lines. The next section deals with the, uh, portable signs. Uh, we had a caller tonight, so obviously that is an issue. The way we left it is the wording, "As recommended by staff, up to two portable signs shall be permitted for any individual business or establishment and the sign content must be limited to the business, service, or goods of the business or the establishment." "The zoning enforcement officer shall determine the number of locations." So no more than two. If two is not warranted because it has exposure on the main highway, it only will be one. Two is when you have the largest shopping centers where you have, uh, special sales going on and they're setback from the road. They like to have their A-frame for like sidewalk sales and then they sign out by the main drag.
How often can they do that?
Uh, that is, uh, up to, yeah, twice a year, uh, for no more than 60 days.
Where is that written on here?
It's, yeah, it's in another section.
Okay. 60 days per?
Yes. And then the last section, on the last page, we eliminated, there's no outdoor, uh, eliminated, "There shall be no outdoor display or sale of products or merchandise." Mobile gas, they want to sell propane. Um, and that would have to come in as a site plan modification. Right now it's prohibited. And the last section deals with the rental or sale of vehicles shall be permitted pursuant to the appropriate state of Connecticut. Motor vehicle license authorizing the selling and renting of used and new vehicles. The old language had arbitrarily, uh, restricted, uh, uh, the number of vehicles on the property. So those are all the, uh, sections. Uh, if the commission is comfortable or if you want more discussion on it, it's your call.
I don't even have that document, so I didn't realize you sent it at 2:30 this afternoon.
Yeah, and I apologize. As you know, I just got back and.
I think the same problem is going to come up with the next item. Can we make copies during recess?
Oh, absolutely.
All right, let's take a five-minute, 10-minute recess where we get copies to the commissioners so we can act on it tonight. 10 minutes.
Start the clock, Leon.
8:05.
Bill, get on your.
Five cents a copy?
There we go. We're going.
10 minutes.
Hey, where do you think he's going?
Well, you're at nine, you're at nine, nine minutes now.
Here, Mike, let me check my clock. Mike, hold on.
Synchronize our watches.
Yeah, I got it. It's 7:56. Okay, 10 minutes. Cindy, text on it. 8:05, tell him to come inside.
Two months or it's, it's, this reads as two months.
Where is he? See that?
There's only three months here.
Did you find it?
16 times four. We're saying four months.
He said 60.
Oh, I understand, but that's, that's not what this is.
That's why I asked because I thought it was.
I didn't see it in the drawing.
It's not laid out like that.
No.
That's why I was. I'd like to get these two done, so we don't have to add it to that.
We'll sell safe tonight. Just hold the sword on the.
Soli's still here. That dude got, that dude got rabbit ears. They're like, they look little, but they're not. They can hear everything. It's like Ryan Condon. Guys are like vultures.
Yeah, we are still recording.
I'm a volunteer. My pay is the sheer enjoyment of my.
Company.
My company.
Our company.
You guys are like extended family.
The only thing is they just want these thick things hanging around your lawn and getting moldy.
That's why I asked him.
Right, well, we've run over this at length.
That's, again, that's why I asked.
But the way this is reading, I'm actually better than the one he explained.
Of course.
Yeah, so if this is what we're agreeing to, I'm fine.
Okay. Can you please?
The volume down button.
I understand. It's like. I don't even want to, I don't even know why. I'm on fire tonight.
Put the band in here or what?
It works awesome.
Just tell them they finished the, the Azac. I told you the whole outside and Azac. Well, fine, not one inch of wood. It's outside. So it was, it was not cheap, but it is forever, you know?
Forever. And you can powder wash it once it gets a little green.
It's getting painted on Monday.
You paint them?
Yeah, because they'll get dirt. Azac will, it, what'll happen is the dirt attaches to it. Uh, you got to paint it. You have to paint. On the floor Monday and they're painting it on the same day. It's like shit is happening so fast. There wasn't even a two-by-four on the site last Monday. It's done right now.
Wow.
Wrapped everything. The coupla isn't going to be in for another three weeks.
Which one?
Los Directs. And then the, the carriage door, that's the end of August. I, I didn't realize that there was such a weight on them. How it's like Bob and Ray. That was a monster against it.
Oh, I'm sure.
Seven grand for one door.
What are you going to do?
It's, it's the focal point of the building.
What did they do?
The guy that did the siding, they bring in these Brazilians too and they just were like, yess. It took me one day, two hours to do the front in the rain and the next day, I'm like, dude, you got to finish it. It's raining out. And the next day, um, another two hours in the morning. Are you mind if we go back in the morning? Like, kind of, but what am I going to say, you know? It's still, it's seven o'clock. They could have finished it by nine at night. They're literally working until dark. They're there at seven, banging nails, compressors are running. They leave at nine o'clock, eight o'clock at night. Nina just texted me, they just left now.
So how big is this thing?
Actually, it's, uh, I didn't take any crosshair. I hate giving people pictures because it doesn't, it, so much changes every day.
I know, but I mean, it's. Two hours?
Right now, the whole thing's white. It's on.
Oh, this is part of the process.
Yeah, you know, a car.
Well, Leon, what are you doing to me?
There's a go left.
Rick, can you hear me? Rick?
Hey, can you hear us now, Donna?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I think Rick leaned on the mic.
Okay, thank you.
So there's literally guys that are literally.
That can mute, that mutes the whole room right there, that button.
Yeah.
You just didn't know.
So no pressure, right? No pressure?
But how did you?
So if Bruno really starts talking, we can just.
We're giving away tickets to the game. Email us if you want to be entered.
You think you could reach that wall to that wall?
Yeah. Oh, I'm pardon. All right. Four tickets to the 39th and we're going to win. Email me and we're like, you won the.
You were the only one. So what about that surprise?
Oh, man, that's a surprise.
That is so cool. It is.
How many times can you say that you were throwing out?
I mean, I've played on it at all these fields, but it's a hot commodity. Stop telling lies. Actually, Minnesota did Metro Dump before they knocked it down. Triple header. Sign, outdoor storage. I have pictures of me holding the. By what?
Oh, that's the name of the team?
Yeah. That guy is a giant goat.
You never see a little blue hat? The good thing is I can't do this, like.
You're into my company.
Well, the only thing is.
Yeah, you would print.
But I checked this floor. There was nothing.
So I get a no, I get notified every time I email, so I'm always.
I have pictures in here of me holding the goat.
I have my, I have them all on my phone. Again, I'm so wired and it's.
Yeah, it's crazy. I'm like everywhere.
When everyone was complaining about the vaccines having microchips, I was like, what are these?
Hard no for me.
We have to feed it, uh.
It's like a hard no today for me.
We have to feed it next week. We have to feed it, uh, Saturday.
Billy, you got to drop them in hot water.
No, I made copies.
So how many times do you have to feed the thing?
Once a week.
I printed this one out at home today. No idea.
Oh, see if you have the, uh, see where you have that.
Let me ask you a question. They can complain places. It's my Facebook. It's like you. Only is all this, you should be coming to town all.
Yeah, it's something people can do, but they don't do it.
They don't do it.
They don't know, they don't know they can.
So it's on what?
On a Tuesday night.
I said, what are you doing? I said, well, they could do it. An opportunity.
You want to talk about this tonight because. These regulations. Drawn into that package.
Well, we can, but I would like to, we just got this this afternoon, you know what I mean?
But only the red pots changed. I'm just saying, I don't want to be until midnight.
I mean, the other thing is I, I, I said this.
What was that?
No, you do.
I was going to say the same thing.
Center of town, I, it's comfortable with. But that's other than that. I'm all right with it, you know?
Oh, yeah, what's her name? Now, it's like, forget about it.
Well, that's new. I mean, you know, they're new.
No, I got that. We have nobody, we have nobody.
Somebody based around. Family housing. Being kind of sold as a guise that we can do whatever we want.
And then it seems like, you know.
That's right.
This is the last item for deliberation. That's Stevenson.
Why, why was there Stevenson removed from the agenda?
There was another Stevenson up on my agenda.
What was that?
Oh, no, that, yeah, that was a, uh.
Or was you putting on an error?
Yes.
I'm really fracked for that one, but that'll be August 5th.
I have my hands full when I got that.
Yeah, I did literally. You had a good trip?
Except for Scottsdale, 115.
I like it.
This is the one that we. Yeah, you're discussing, direct me to write a report. Yeah, here you go. Here's Stevenson.
Wouldn't you give me that idea?
Nicole Stevenson.
All right, we're going to be here till midnight tonight. I'm starving. Leon, Leon. Am I feeling pump? Go easy. I'm not doing it. To keep it too much more on. I may be able to fit in.
I need, I need.
He just went from a dead no.
Arguing with himself.
Dead no?
That was so smoothly on. Not, not, no chance, no chance.
And that Affordable Housing Plan, we got to get that.
Lift him. He closed me up, right? Stop that. Get him going.
Hey, we're going to resume.
All right, where are we going, Mike?
July 22nd, 2021, Congressman Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is now resuming at 8:10. We left off with R A A 2021-05, file number 1019E. This is a town's text amendment, our text amendment. Now, we all have a copy in front of us. We'll be voting tonight on this approval. Uh, you heard Rick's summary. Uh, you heard Rick's summary. Of the approval.
For clarification, is this only the seated members that are discussing this right now, or is this everybody?
Whoever was here.
Seated, just the seated on this one. Okay. Thank you. Am I in or out?
You're in.
On this.
You're in on this.
So I need to know. Am I in or am I out?
So is there any, any discussion now that we've heard?
I, I want some, some further clarification on the timing, Rick, because when I asked the question before, it's not consistent what, what we found in the.
What page?
I don't know now. I was looking at hers, at her, uh, packet before. I didn't have my own copy. Page eight.
Thank you.
Okay, it's right, right towards the bottom, the third, uh, section to the bottom. Not to exceed fifteen days.
On the signage? We're talking about. What page?
That's talking about signs first.
Okay.
You're talking about whatever you want.
That's a thirty-two square foot, eight-foot sign, right?
Rob, which one are you looking at?
Page eight.
Third from the bottom.
Oh, special event sign.
That's a big sign. Okay, so what about the sandwich signs? Where is the timeframe on the sandwich signs?
That's. That's what hasn't been, uh, spelled out.
Okay.
With clarity. Which we've done in the past.
I don't know. I just asked a question. And it was, said it was sixty days twice a year.
That's what we did. That's what we've been doing past practice. So.
This says not to exceed fifteen days.
It's a special.
That's a special event sign, you know, like, uh, town, you know, uh, town celebration day.
We don't have nothing.
Where do we, where do we leave off on that, Rick? Where are we at on that?
I thought we left it blank and we were gonna discuss it today.
Yes.
Yeah.
Page eight.
I don't know. I, I don't know.
Not sure where we go, but we haven't discussed the.
Do we have that in here?
That's what we were supposed to do today, was decide how long we wanted the sandwich signs out for.
Yeah, we're.
It's not in here yet.
Not in here at all?
No, we have to put it in. Yeah. Then we can't vote on it anyway.
No, we can.
Add it. We, we can add it, yeah.
Okay. All right, let me read it to you for clarity. Because it doesn't have the, the, uh, speci- uh, specific, uh, dates. Portable signs will be issued for an operating period of one calendar year from January first to December thirty first. Calendar year. The zoning officer may issue on an annual basis, subject to renewal. Application of renewals will shall be, will be accepted between November thirtieth and December thirtieth, end of the calendar year.
Right up.
That doesn't give us. That's no timeframe. That's all against.
That's what I'm saying. There's no timeframe, but that's what we've been doing in the past.
So as long as you get approval, you can leave it out all day, every day.
Well, you gotta bring it in, uh, at dusk.
Whatever, you know what I mean?
So the original was.
So you wake up at six and you walk outside your store and you can put it out until you go home.
All right, go to page eight, because Bruno, you brought it up.
Thank you.
Go to page eight.
I don't even know what I.
Portable signs, you wanna put, you wanna put timeframes in it back.
Uh, Rick?
We wanna talk about it anyway.
Yeah.
Donna.
The voice of God.
The temporary signs for businesses, usually it ran four times a year and they could leave it out for fourteen days, I believe, was the regulation.
I'm good with that.
That, that's been the policy. It's not spelled out. That's what it is, Donna.
Okay, all right. Sorry, I just wanted to clarify that that's what it was.
Four times?
I thought it was four times a year and the O's could be out for fourteen days. But it should be, if you have.
Sounds good to me.
That's fifty-six days. It has, you see the sixties? See, that's.
Rick, Uniman. Four times, six weeks each.
But do you wanna add it in there? Because you have the schedule here.
Spell it out. Spell it out, so it's.
It's spell it out instead of doing a will and.
As long as everybody else. Because right now it just says refer to.
Yeah, and it doesn't.
And, and if you look at standards, it doesn't say it.
But you wanna put it in that chart, because it's all.
Worth times a year in two-week increments.
Yes. Is everyone okay with that?
I, I kept them.
That's what we've been doing, so we're a little memorializing here.
Yeah, during COVID, we threw it out the window.
Memorialize, that's such a big word. I like that. Powerful.
Any other?
Other than that.
Question, does a portable sign has setbacks too?
Uh, here we go.
No.
Well, then.
It's sidelined. That's why the Z E O has to go and do the process. It can't be in the rider way though, Leon. Because the state will remove it. You know, like three feet high. Three to four feet. They really have become uniform. You know, ten years ago, they were homemade. You know, they, they have good manufacturers.
Okay. What if I drive a.
So, um.
They might be in my sightline.
Were you else set on that, Rick?
Yeah, sounds great.
Do we need a motion for this?
Yeah, with the noted, uh, addition.
Yeah.
Chair, I intend a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve R A A, uh, two zero two one dash zero five, file one zero one nine E. With the, um, amendments, uh, noted.
Effective date, July thirtieth.
Second. I have a motion. I have a second. Is any further discussion? If not, call the roll, starting with Commissioner Condon.
Condon, yes. Riley, yes.
Rainey, yes.
Westland, yes.
Passes.
See you. That, wow, that's, 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 yes. I like it.
Next on deliberations and determinations is S C P twenty twenty one dash oh seven, file number one six three two A, fifteen forty-five Monroe Turnpike. Commissioner, this should have a copy of a, uh, draft approval in front of them.
Want me to read it, Mr. Chairman?
You can, um, like to brief us.
Okay, this is a special exception permit, twenty twenty one oh seven, file one six three two A, fifteen forty-five Monroe Turnpike. Whereas the commission is considering an S C P application seeking approval for the following. Special exception permit for vehicle storage facility. Whereas the proposed use requires commission approval for S C P. Whereas the subject property consists of approximately ten acre, is located in the west of the side of Monroe Turnpike. Within the commercial S B two district. That's our new zone there. And the three buildings in one open structure. You have three buildings and then this shed. Whereas, uh, during the course of review, commission noted the following, sites not located in a public watershed. Sites not located. Site is located within five hundred feet of the town of Newtown boundary. Property is not located within a map floodplain. Application does not have any inland wetland regulated activities associated with this project. Site is not subject to a conservation easement. Site access is existing and provided via driveway from Monroe Turnpike, state route one eleven. Which access driveway will be replaced by a future private driveway in accordance with the master plan. Proposed activity will not be a major traffic generator. Site is served by public water on-site individual subsurface disposal system. Applicant proposes to occupy buildings B and C and structure D. Building A will be occupied by another tenant, subject to P and Z approval. Applicant has agreed to repaint the exterior of the buildings and make necessary interior, exterior repairs and improvements consistent, uh, with the master plan. I'd just like to note, we have the architectural review board for the application that's coming in August fifth. For the building, uh, just to the, uh, to the north. And, uh, the exterior color, uh, theme for that other building is a slate blue. All of the colors are going to be coordinated, so the applicant will be reporting. That was a, a comment that came up, you know, what's the exterior gonna look like? Uh, the applicant already started doing interior repairs in the roof, as acknowledged during the public hearing. But there is gonna be a theme with the color. And that's something that's, uh, important and you will hear it in more detail at the, uh, August fifth. Whereas the commission considered the proposed application of a duly notice public hearing, opened and closed on July first. Notice of the public hearing was filed in the Monroe Town Clerk's office and published in voices. The public hearing notice was sent to a buddy propingers within one hundred feet, as evidenced by certified mail receipt. Now therefore be resolved, the commission in accordance with section eight dash two point two. Finds the following in respect to the special exception permit. General standards, the proposal seeks to approve, uh, seeks approval to permit a commercial vehicle. Requiring a commercial vehicle facility requiring a special exception permit, permitted in the S P two's district. All off-street parking, loading, site utilities, lighting, drainage, landscaping improvements are involved to provide compliance with applicable zoning standards. The proposed action is consistent with the P O C D. No signage is proposed at this time. It was brought out before the architectural review board that a ground sign, pretty minor in, in size, like a ground sign. Will be coming in before the commission for the four-lot, uh, development there. Proposed off-street parking and loading will be provided in compliance with applicable zoning standards. And E landscaping will be provided in accordance with the master plan. Heard by the applicant and the, uh, uh, representative of the owner, uh, discussing the master plan. You got a row going in, uh, that will be built, uh, soon. And the supplemental landscaping along Route eleven, as well as landscaping on that, uh, new, uh, road. So, having said that, uh, after the commission makes a motion and second, the, uh, recommended, uh, conditions are. Submission of annual personal property declaration to the town of Monroe Assessor, no later than November first. This is something we're gonna do consistently when we have motor vehicles involved. We did it with the, uh, Amazon. And this is something that the assessor is requesting that the commission consider. Two, the parking of tractor trailers shall be, shall be prohibited. And normal hours of operations are Sunday through Saturday, seven A to eight P M. With occasional late hours during emergency and special circumstances. The applicant that's going to be occupying and purchasing the property. Does emergency service for the state D O T, hospitals, et cetera. So there will be some late night, uh, uh, visits to the site, you know, exiting and coming back. But generally speaking, those are the hours applicant, uh, convey that, uh, to the, uh, commission as well.
Okay, Commissioner Lupo, you are seated on this.
I'm out.
Right.
Yeah, Nancy, uh, Nicole's on this.
Okay. Chair, I intend a motion to, um, approve S C P twenty twenty one dash oh seven.
I'll make a motion to approve S C P twenty twenty one oh seven, file number one six three two A.
Rosie, second.
Have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll call the roll, starting with Commissioner Condon.
Condon, yes.
And Rosie, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Westland, yes.
Lupo, yes.
Passes. Other business. Number, well, eight, we have the P O C D online implementation discussion. That going forward?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, even though the, uh, June meeting was interrupted, uh, online. Uh, we got, uh, the, the whole, uh, questionnaire implementation. That was just sent to me today. Uh, we are gonna put that online with I T. I'm meeting with I T next Tuesday. This closes out the whole P O C D. This is the implementation component. So we will be posting that, uh, as early as next Tuesday, uh, online. And once again, um, he apologizes. He was at his mother's house and, uh, the, his, uh.
Disagree.
Screen wasn't working well. Francisco.
Okay. Under other business, number nine, I have, uh, two requests.
We have three, Mr. Chairman.
I think we already, um, moved first one, the application withdrawal. No, actually, we do have three more. First is, uh, a letter from Solly Engineering, a request for an extension of approval to complete the R O E process. Application number S C P twenty twenty dash oh five, file number sixteen twenty five A. This is six fifteen Main Street. Your commissioners, on behalf of the applicant best in backyard, whom Solly Engineering is authorized representative in this matter, we formally request a ninety-day extension. Of the approval for application, um, as noted above, in order to complete the ongoing R O E process. Any comments on that, Rick? Chair, I entertain a motion to grant the request.
I'll make a motion to grant the request.
Have a motion and, uh, need a second?
Second, Ambrosi.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Rainey, yes.
Westland, yes.
Passes. I have another letter from Solly Engineering. This is a request for an extension of approval to complete the R O E process, application number E F P twenty nineteen dash oh two, file number one oh three, seven dash fifteen Main Street. Your commissioners, on behalf of one fifteen Main Street LLC, for whom Solly Engineering is authorized representative, we formally request a nine-day extension. Of the approval for application, not as noted above, to complete R O E process. Any comments on this, Rick?
Mr. Chairman.
All right, chair, I entertain a motion to grant this request.
I'll make a motion to grant the request.
Have a motion, need a second?
Second from Ambrosi.
Any further discussion? Not call the roll, starting with Commissioner Condon.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Rainey, yes.
Westland, yes.
Now, motion passed. And finally, I have an email from, uh, Hans Karamas. Uh, eighty K F Projects Incorporated. Aided today at two forty-five P M. On behalf of the one dot fifteen Main Street LLC, I am requesting elimination of condition number three, lot merger on application. As a condition for current approval, my client wishes to merge properties at the time of the site plan submission. Okay, so this is basically, this is excavation permit, correct?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have the, uh, approval letter before me. Excavation permit approval, E F P twenty nineteen oh two, file one oh three E. It was approved on March fifth and there were, uh, five, uh, conditions of approval. Condition number three, lot merger. Applicants shall provide draft legal instruments. Lot merger map and corresponding warranty D detailing the merger of seven and fifteen Main Street parcels into a single fee simple lot. Upon acceptance, the legal instruments shall be executed and recorded in the office of the Monroe Town Clerk. I am a call, the applicant and copies thereof, as recorded, showing all marks of recording shall be provided to the planning and zoning department. As the commission, as the chairman read, the request is not to do this merger now, but to do it at the time of the site plan. Uh, COVID really slowed down the, uh, the filling and grading. That's why you see the other extensions. And, uh, they prefer to do the, the merger, uh, component. It doesn't interfere with anything. Obviously, you gotta have the merger done if there's a project approved. Whether it's done now or during the site plan consideration, they are asking you to eliminate it now and do it at the site plan.
Okay, thank you. Chair, we'll entertain a motion to grant the request to eliminate the condition number three, a lot merger.
I'll make a motion. The whole thing from the, the whole application?
No, just for that. Condition number three.
From the, from the, uh, excavation permit.
Leon, they have to fill all of them or it becomes null and void. So by eliminating this, they can fulfill all the other conditions and comply in the timeframe. They also are getting an extension, which you granted tonight. It's a timing for them. There's three parcels. They prefer to do it at. It's a timing for them, there's three parcels, they prefer to do it at the site plan.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to eliminate, uh, condition number three.
Have a motion, need a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
I want, why was it put in place in the first place?
Oh, it's a standard, uh, when you have multiple parcels and, uh, you have an application, the commission always recommends and suggests that you do it. If it was a site plan application, there would be no way, you would have to do it. But this isn't the development phase, this is just the fill, uh, the grading phase. And they're asking the commission, please take that matter up during the site plan.
So there are two separate zones, right?
Yeah.
It's two separate zones.
So it doesn't interfere with the filling, uh, filling part of it.
Okay.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll call the roll.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Mainy, yes.
Westland, yes.
Passes. Other business. Number 10, regulation review amendment work session, we have a session planned for Monday, I believe, at 5:00 p.m.
Yes, uh, it's a loaded agenda, so the members, uh, normally come, do you have any conflicts? And, uh, I am going to get the agenda out tomorrow to everyone because it involves repairing buffer regulations initiated by the Conservation Commission. It involves interior lots, right now, interior lots are prohibited within the town of Monroe. And, uh, it involves that, uh, ambiguous regulation on stockpiling. We all read that, gotta deal with that, because it, it's gonna come up, uh, a lot more often, and we have to, uh,
You're gonna put native planting on it as well? The native planting from the Conservation Commission as well?
Yes. That's all gonna be included, we'll have representatives of the, the Conservation Commission there.
All right, so everyone can make that? All right, do we have any correspondence other than what we've gone through?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners report. Um, I have no report at this time. Chairman's report, sorry, commissioners' report.
No, sir.
Any of the commissioners have any thing to report?
No, sir.
If not, then we'll, uh, go to land use staff report.
The, uh, the only thing I want to report on, as, uh, the commission is aware with the new laws involving, uh, recreational marijuana, uh, just to reiterate it, and the commission's already brought it up. It's prohibited in town both for cultivation and for retail. The federal statutes still currently prohibit it. And most towns that prohibit it, uh, rely on that federal statute. I have a seminar next week with my organization and a member of the governor's office is going to be discussing that. You've probably read in the paper, a lot of towns are becoming proactive and saying, we don't want it. And they're putting in the regulations, you already have it in your X. It's prohibited both for cultivation and, uh, retail. But I, uh, suspect it's gonna be a hot ticket item down the road.
Well, some towns are moving in the other direction, trying to attract cultivation.
Right, well, and the retail part of it.
And retail.
That's the, that's the more profound component, the retail.
Well, I don't think we're allowed retail because we're under 30 or 40,000.
Right, you can say no. But your, your regulations say no to both. To do with, uh, uh, regulating marijuana. So, it's gonna be interesting, everyone, how this unfolds in our state. So I'll be reporting on that when I learn. But you're correct, Mr. Chairman, on the, uh, population threshold, we have.
Do we have a report on violations, uh, from Joe?
I'm reporting that on, uh, the August meeting.
Any questions, please?
Any more outdoor dining or no?
Uh, no, but have, uh, members going to vases, because.
Yeah, I saw the fireplace and the layout, it's coming along.
Yeah, unless, Bill, do we get anywhere else away? Just those four, any new, uh, outdoor dining? I think we've seen it for, probably, yeah.
Okay, chair will entertain a motion to dismiss.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Meeting is now adjourned.
Bring it together.
For 6:00 p.m.